Good evening and welcome to this public hearing. Will you please turn off any cell phones or electronic devices that might go off during this time? We'd like silence from them, please. So I will call this meeting to an end. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions to the agenda? All right. Since there are no additions to the agenda, the next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed construction project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet at the door, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of the preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required on August 26, 2021, in the News Gazette. At this time, I'll ask that the board council explain the purpose of this hearing.
Good evening. My name is Jane Herndon. I'm a partner with Ice Miller and working with the school corporation as bond counsel. You know, usually people don't tell me they can't hear me, so thank you. I'll try again. Jane Herndon, I'm a partner at the law firm of Ice Miller and working with the school corporation as bond counsel. The school corporation is required to hold a public hearing under Indiana 6-1.1-20-3.1, when it is considering a project that will be financed with bonds over certain thresholds, which in this school corporation's case would be 1% of their gross assessed value. At this hearing, you will hear about the potential project and maximum financial terms to that borrowing, and there will be an opportunity for the public to be heard, as you heard after the presentation. There will be no resolutions considered at this meeting. There will be a second hearing where the board will consider resolutions that will establish the maximum borrowing amounts.
We will now hear from the superintendent about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
Thank you, Linda. Just to bring everybody up to speed, about two years ago, we partnered with SiteLogic, the engineering architecture firm that will do the presentation tonight to do a facility study to help Randolph Eastern not only see some of our weak points as far as what's behind the walls, but from rooftop to parking lots, those type of things. And they did a great assessment for us and helped us identify some needs, some areas that we needed to address. And as the board, we determined there were some areas that academically we needed to approach to address to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students who are, quite frankly, just learning in a far different way than they did 10, 15, 20 years ago, maybe even five years ago. So we started the process of discussion on what's our highest need. Number one on the list was we need small room space, classroom space at the elementary for small group instruction. So when you see the presentation, the courtyard infill was the project that we took on to take care of that need. That need is driven by a number of different areas. COVID has created even a greater learning loss than we could have imagined, so the need for small group instruction that's not a closet or a hallway is definitely a need for our Northside Elementary students. Then we started to look at our CTE programming and how we were preparing our junior, senior high students for 21st century job skills and how to make them productive citizens. So we looked into the CTE wing, which is the old shop wing, for those of you who graduated from here, Mark Welch's area, and looked at that area and tried to decide the best way to explore options to really make our college and technical education, our career in technical education stronger than what it is now by providing the appropriate workspace for our students. So what we've done there, and you'll see this in the presentation for SiteLogic as well, is created a space where our computer science, cybersecurity, engineering, and our agricultural program can really take off by really just improving the space, the learning space for our students. And you'll see that in that presentation as well. There's been some talk, and I'll address this now and again if I'm asked questions later, about our agricultural program and being cut through this process, and that's absolutely not the case. If anything, this is a large investment into our agricultural program, so just keep that in mind as we move through the program. So we looked at needing a small group instruction, CTE program, junior, senior high. And then overall facility-wise, one, two areas that really came up in the study were our library and media centers needing a refresh. So in the presentation, you'll see a 3D walkthrough of the Northside Elementary Library Media Center as well as the junior, senior high. And again, those are creating flexible workspaces for our 21st century learners, those students that are doing some online or hybrid work with our teachers right here at Union City. It's good flexible space for them to complete that work. I know that you can walk our facilities, and they are in phenomenal shape. And I know a lot of questions are the why, you know, it's functional. My best analogy for that and response to that is back there behind you, there's a DVD and a VCR combo. It's in phenomenal shape, very functional. You could watch a VHS on it, but it's just not what we need for 2021. And that's the same thing that has driven this discussion to improve our educational spaces for students in 2021. So that's the history and how this project came to fruition. So at this time, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Puccini.
We will now hear from SiteLogic about how the proposed project meets the needs as described by Mr. Black, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Black. So I will go ahead and start walking us through the presentation here and, oops. There we go. First, we'll just talk through the scope overview. This is just the layout of the facility here. You'll see from the top right where we're doing the courtyard build-out, moving down into the K through eight media center renovation. Moving over to our left, you'll see the CTE renovation. And all the way here in the far left, the high school media center renovation. This really just gives you an idea of, from a floor plan standpoint, this is the areas that will be considered for improvement. What I'll do now is I'll walk you through, this is the CTE space and the renovation that's being considered in this area. You can see here, this is the computer lab. And as you walk from the computer lab, we've got the CTE classroom. The CTE classroom and the CTE lab are going to be two similar spaces. The goal here is to provide as much flexible learning spaces as possible. And you'll see kind of a common theme through this is closer to the corridor, you've got kind of your teaching spaces, and you'll see this as we go through the walkthrough, the 3D walkthrough. So, and then here, you've got kind of the working area where the students would be able to kind of learn, get some instruction here, and then move over into this hands-on laboratory area. Moving in from the CTE lab over into the project lab, which is currently your industrial arts space, similar concept here where you've got kind of the teaching station here on this side, and then you've got your hands-on lab here on the other side of the classroom. A couple of things to point out as well, here you've got an overhead door to kind of open up the space for more collaboration and flexible space. And then also integrating some natural light with some overhead doors, and then also being able to take any work that's to be performed outside, you know, being able to access that right from this space here. And you'll see a little bit of a better view of this as we go through the 3D walkthrough. This is the courtyard build-out, so on the other side of here would be where the media center is located. You can see the purpose of this, as Mr. Black alluded to, was trying to find some collaborative breakout spaces. And so you can see here in the center of the space, you've got, you know, more of your traditional learning area, you've got a couple of smart boards with, I'm sorry, whiteboards with the smart board, some flexible learning spaces here, but then being able to, you know, get some instruction and then move into some breakout rooms. So you've got four breakout rooms here on this end of the courtyard build-out, and then having two additional here on this end of it. You'll see again from the 3D walkthrough that this is a very inviting and open space with windows to be able to see into the common areas, and really just trying to create an inviting space for students to learn and be able to collaborate. This is the K8 media center. So here is, currently you've got a wall here that separates, the circulation desk is over here, and one of the features here is knocking down this wall and enhancing the space, moving the circulation desk back here. This is an existing workroom. And again, similar to the other spaces, kind of having two different zones here, one for the lower, the elementary area, and the one for the middle school. And you'll see with the 3D walkthrough, maintaining a lot of the tall bookshelves along the perimeter and trying to enhance and having innovative collaborative spaces here with lower shelving for the books. So it'll have a feel of collaborative space, but also have the feel for a traditional And then you've got some little breakout areas here for collaborative learning spaces. This is the high school media center. A lot of improvements with finishes, flooring finishes, walls. The big change here is currently this is a computer lab that's divided by a wall, so really trying to create a space to encourage collaboration, opening up a wall here to, this is the main corridor, and really inviting students in from the corridor and really just having a homey, a comfortable feeling for them to really treat this as a tech bar area. And then here, you've got an existing breakout space that is going to remain. But this area, as well as the other media center, gets a lot of finishes, improvements with the walls and flooring, and then really enhancing some of these comfortable collaborative learning spaces. So I'll walk you through, this is the CTE renovation. And first, you know, this is kind of a 3D vision of what it's going to look like, and you can see, this is the computer lab that you saw in the bird's eye view. From there, you'll walk into the CTE classroom. And as I mentioned, you've got your teaching spaces on this side and learning spaces, and then you have kind of your hands-on on the opposite side, closer to the outside wall. You can see a lot of the open concept with the light glass and glazing between the classrooms. Now we're walking into the CTE lab. Again, both spaces can be used as a CTE classroom, but in this particular case, here's where you would, you know, perform your lab, you know, experiments and those kinds of things. As I alluded to, here's the overhead door to be able to have that collaborative space between the project lab and the CTE lab. What you'll see here is, right here, we've got a couple of welding shops here. And again, this is really based around technology, engineering, and agriculture. You can see here is the overhead door that we had alluded to. There was two of them, really to be able to integrate the natural light into the space. Here you've got a tool crib for locking up, it's a mesh tool crib, is what was envisioned here, to be able to lock up, you know, tools and those types of things. So that really gives you kind of a 360 view of what that CTE space would transform into. Second here. This kind of gives you a nice view of what the courtyard build-out would look like, gives you a nice volumetric vision of what that space would be enhanced to. And so same thing here, we've got a 3D, so this would be coming off the main corridor with the K8 media center to our back. You can see here's the, kind of that horseshoe area where instruction would take place, you know, for the first 10 or 15 minutes, and then students would break out into these different collaborative learning spaces. You can see, you know, a lot of the, oops. Sorry about that. Oops. There we go. So as we're walking kind of through here, you can see a lot of the flexible learning spaces, and you can see here the four breakout spaces for, you know, six to eight students to be able to collaborate in those areas. Again, a lot of openness between the areas, kind of giving it a very open feeling for the students, a welcoming environment. And then here, as we're turning around, here are the other two breakout rooms that, so there's four on one side and then two on the opposite side. So again, you can kind of see kind of the change in the elevation between where it's at, the current elevation of the building, and then the build-out is going to be a little bit raised relative to the existing structure. This is the media center, the K8 media center. So as you can see, a lot of the shelving, the high-top shelves are going to be maintained along the perimeter wall with a lot of the lower shelving in the center area, really to create that collaborative learning environment for students. This would be the elementary area, kind of broken into two zones, really isn't a designated area, but if you were to look at having a couple of classrooms in there at the same time, this would be considered kind of the elementary part of the media center. And again, you can see the new finishes, the flooring finishes and wall finishes. And flexible seating spaces. As you're walking through here, we'll see off to the right is kind of a nice collaborative learning space, kind of a fun area for the kids to be able to learn and collaborate And so the fourth space would be the high school media center. Again, very similar with the improvements of the finishing of the flooring and the walls, kind of revitalizing the space, utilizing the high-top bookshelves along the perimeter walls, as well as kind of the lower top bookshelves in the center of the space. The big transition here, as I mentioned, is right in this area here is where the existing computer lab is. And so what, taking this wall down, creating a larger space, and then really integrating the corridor and making it a more inviting space for high school students to want to spend time in the technology bar. So you can see kind of the open concept and really trying to integrate that into the common area. The other thing you see here is a small area for, again, to Mr. Black's point, being able to collaborate, you know, student collaboration, small breakout spaces. And this is really ultimately what the vision that was communicated and designed around So we'll quickly run through the facility improvement measures. So those are the four facility improvement measures, and then the budgets associated with that. So the CTE renovation is budgeted at, for construction costs, is $1.1 million. The courtyard build-out was $3.47 million. The K8 media center renovation is $473,000. And then the high school media center renovation at $570,000. And then the estimated issuance cost, which Baker Tilly will address, was $380,000 for a total bond proceeds of $6 million.
Can you put that back up for a little while? Thank you, Nelson. Good evening. My name is Brent Habager. I'm with Baker Tilly. We work as the financial advisors and municipal advisors for the school corporation, assisting with bond issuance and also budgets and things of those matter. I'm going to walk through the financial impact of the proposed $6 million bonds here this Are you done with the previous slide?
Thank you.
The slide we have here is an existing debt service, lease rental slide. So this is the school corporation's debt obligations as they stand today. What you'll notice on this slide is that annual payments from 2020 out until 2026 are at approximately $800,000. You will notice that in 2021, there was an increase in annual payments as a result of the issuance of the first mortgage bonds in 2020, although the school corporation, as part of that issuance, used cash available on hand in the debt service fund in order to make that additional payment, that increase in payment in 2021, and did not levy for the additional payments through taxes. So the school corporation is scheduled to have $800,000 in annual payments out through 2026. In 2027, there's a falloff of about $100,000 currently. And then in '29 and '2030, there's an additional falloff of around $300,000 annually, with all debt currently being amortized by the end of 2030. This slide here is a numerical representation of the current outstanding debt of the school corporation as we sit today. Each row represents the debt of the school corporation. There's a couple of common school fund loans you'll see there. A QZAB from 2006, a general obligation bond in 2018, and then the most recently, the first mortgage bonds of 2020. The far right column then is the total annual payments of the school corporation. Again, you can see that annual payments are currently at around $800,000, with that blip up to $1 million that we discussed in 2021, and then falling back to $800,000 again in 2022 through 2026. In '27, '28, debt does begin to roll off, and we're at about $700,000 annually there. And then '29 and '30, an additional $300,000 per year falls off, with all debt being amortized by the end of 2030. To the proposed $6 million bonds, summary of the bonds is that the assumed borrowing amount is $6 million, which is the max that is being proposed, with a repayment term of 19 years and 11 months. The estimated interest cost for that $6 million amortized over 19 years and 11 months is currently $2,779,911. That is based off of current market indicators. And then we've also added 100 basis points, or 1% to that number, in order to come up with a maximum for that estimated interest cost. So a conservative number there. The estimated increase in annual payments, meaning the increase over that $800,000 that we were looking at, is approximately $188,625. When applied to the levy, with the 2021 net assessed value of $179,504, that yields you an estimated incremental tax impact on the school corporation's debt service fund of approximately 10 cents. This slide here is a graphical representation of the existing debt of the school corporation and the proposed $6 million borrowing. The gray bars here represent the existing debt of the school corporation, again, being amortized through 2030. And then the greenish-yellow bars represent the amortization of the $6 million proposed issue. You can see that this would take out the school corporation's total debt to 2041 and increase annual payments in 2023 through 2026 up to about $1 million a year. Now you'll see kind of the barbershop pole represented above the gray line there in 2022. This represents capitalized interest payment that the school corporation plans to make on the bonds in budget year 2022. And what that is, is that the school corporation will use proceeds from the issuance of the bond to pay for the interest due in year 2022. So they will not, they will not collect an additional levy in 2022. That additional levy will then begin in budget year 2023. Again, you're looking at a $6 million borrowing over 19 years and 11 months, with estimated interest costs of $2,779,911. This here is the numerical representation. The first column, you have your payment year. And then the second column, you have the school corporation's current outstanding existing debt as it stands today, and the proposed $6 million in that third row. And these bonds are estimated to close in February of 2022. Again, approximately $167,000 of that payment in 2022 is being paid for out of proceeds of the bonds, with then the school corporation adding an additional impact to levy beginning in 2023. And then over on the far right here, you can see annual payments are creeping up to that $1 million a year, so $992,000, $987,000. And that's carried forward until 2026. And then we maintain that $100,000 drop in '26, and the approximate $300,000 drop in '28 and '29. And then after 2030, the only issue remaining for the school corporation is approximately $650,000 in annual payments on the proposed issue through 2041. Here we have estimated taxpayer incremental impact, so the additional impact of the bonds, which we mentioned was approximately 10 cents. In Indiana, for a homestead, the value of a homestead is based on the market value of the home, as assessed by the county assessor. Here, we've illustrated five different homestead values, ranging from $50,000 to $200,000. The $72,000, $200 homestead is the median or the middle value of all the homesteads in the school corporation. However, in Indiana, the tax rate is not applied to the gross assessed value or the market value, it is applied to the net assessed value. So there are certain deductions that homesteads have. There's a standard deduction, which is lesser of 60% or $45,000, and then supplemental homestead deductions and a $3,000 mortgage deduction if you hold a mortgage on your home. And so that's how this calculation from column one gets to column two. And the net assessed value then is the tax rate. And the net assessed value then is, the tax rate of 10 cents is then applied to every $100 of net assessed value. So for a $50,000 homestead, you have a $10,000 net assessed value. We apply the 10-cent tax rate to that homestead on $100 for ever, or per $100 of that $10,000, which yields your annual incremental impact of approximately $10 and a monthly impact of 83 cents. If you look down here at the $2,000 homestead, we have a net assessed value of 97,750. And when the tax rate of 10 cents then is applied to the net assessed value per $100, you see it yields annual impact of $97.85. Agricultural land, agricultural land is, the net assessed value of an acre of agricultural land is 1,290. And now that does vary a little bit based on productivity factors and other things that go into it, but the standard rate applied to agricultural land is $1,290 per acre. And then as, there are no deductions for agricultural land. So as you apply the 10 cents to the agricultural land, you'll see that it yields approximately $1.29 per acre or $129.13 for 100 acres. And then for $100,000 of commercial rental property, that 10-cent impact yields $101.10. That is all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions or comments, be willing to answer any.
Thank you. Yeah, we're getting there. Okay. We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet, which is located with Mrs. Lindsay Burke. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name and address, limit your comments to the proposed project and financing, keep any comments to three minutes, and avoid being repetitive if possible. I may have the sign-in sheet now, and I'll begin calling the names of those who are interested in speaking, or is Lindsay going to call? Okay. Thank you. Okay. First, we have Cody Brunz.
I don't care what order he's going necessarily, but I have someone being in a bunch of redundancy if at all possible. Do you guys want to, if somebody wants to go first, I would say.
Yeah. Somebody wants to go first? Come on up. Just state your name.
Just state my name. I'm Derek Moat, 1701 South State Route 227, Union City, Indiana. Lived there quite a few years. Okay, you told us like $1,290 an acre for productive soil. Who's going to determine the productivity of the soil like that? And I'm going to be really upfront about this. A lot of farmers, I'm sitting with at a table with some farmers that I know pretty well, their costs are going to go up tremendously this coming year. And some of them don't even know it yet. Now you tell me how in the world we're going to keep paying this $1,290 for, you said like 100 acres, or 1,000? Which is it?
So I think there may be a slight misunderstanding there. The $1,290 represents what an acre of farmland is assessed at.
Okay.
So it's not the actual impact of your tax bill. It's what the value of that land is assessed at in the state of Indiana for 2022.
Okay, I understand that. So who's going to assess, what is, who's going to assess the value of the ground? Because value of ground has gone up.
That's set by the state. That's an average of five years.
Okay. Like I said, what are the factors that go into it?
Rent, interest, the price of commodities, and land prices.
What is the highest percentage of that? What is the highest percentage of that? What do you dictate the highest percentage on?
It's an average of five years of those factors that go into figuring.
Ground goes to $10,000 an acre.
So we're at a high crisis now, so $12.9 is in the line.
So what would the value of the tax be on $10,000 an acre ground?
The tax rate is determined by accounting and all of your tax requirements.
Sir, if you have your tax bill, that will tell you on there your assessed value on the tax bill that you get every spring, and that then can be used to use the rent's numbers and apply to it. So if you have that, I'm sure we can get that information to you. If you can, if you're willing to share your tax bill, that will give you that assessed value.
I do not have my tax bill. So, okay, let's go to businesses. What is the tax rate going to do to businesses? Because you have a lot of businesses in town who have abatements. We don't at Moat Farm Service Incorporated. We do not have a tax abatement. So what is the, what are the taxes going to be on businesses?
So for businesses, they'll fall into the commercial property there, and the tax will be a 10-cent impact applied to their assessed value. So the county assessor will assess the value, the gross assessed value, of that business. And then, once that, once the assessor has assessed that, the tax rate of 10 cents for this bond only will be applied to that business. Now, there is a caveat to that, is that there are tax caps in the state of Indiana. So there's 1% for homesteads, and then there's 2% tax cap for farmland and rental property and non-homestead properties, and then a 3% tax cap for commercial property. Now, if the business is already paying 3% of their total gross assessed value in their tax bill, there may be no increase in their total tax bill. Now, if they're paying up to that point, whatever increase over the 3% will be yielded on their tax bill.
So if Union City was capped out, which I've heard they are.
Yes.
That increase goes to everyone else, but same taxes, correct?
So it's.
Everyone that would be below their circuit breaker tax credit.
Okay, so it's going to go to farm ground.
So farm ground, their tax credit would be at 2%. So it's actually, it's actually at a lower tax cap than what, than what the commercial property would be at.
I understand that, but if the homeowner is already capped out, capped, and it's going to go, and to pay it, it's going to have to go to the farm ground.
It doesn't necessarily go to anyone else. It's what you would be required on your total tax bill to pay. So the entities just don't receive that money. So tax caps are, is money that is not received.
I understand that, but it's going to come from someplace. So who's going to pay the increase?
In the incremental increase?
When I look at these numbers.
This is assuming that all taxpayers are not at their tax cap.
Well, if the homeowner is already capped, just a simple homeowner, which, you know, I can look here, and there's just homeowners here, which is fine. You know, that's great. So where is the money going to come from to be able to pay this money that you're asking for every year? Where is it going to come from? It's not magic.
School corporation is required to levy their debt service fund, and then they have circuit breaker tax credits that they must live within. So as part of the decision, Mr. Black looked at those, the projections on the circuit breakers and decided that even with the addition of this, he could live within those circuit breaker tax credits. So it's, it's not that it's going to anyone. It's whatever payment is not being collected on that, because of the circuit breaker tax credits, the school corporation is not going to receive.
Well, I'm just gonna, you know, I, all this stuff, you know, I'm looking at this, and you're telling us a $6 million project, just for this. And that's assuming, that's why I'm taking here, I'm standing here, that nothing else, you're not going to need any money for anything else. I understand that, but what I'm saying is, what other projects are you looking at down the future? Because if we're going to spend $6 million on this, and you already have an existing debt, what other projects do you have in mind that's going to take a lot of money? Because your building costs right now are astronomical. And I don't understand why you would want to do this, and when building costs are probably at an all-time high. And, you know, when you say this, and you're talking about a $6 million project, and if something else would happen, because I heard you say you took cash to pay on something.
Correct. We use debt service cash that we can't use really anywhere else to help pay down debt that was occurring.
Okay. Do you have extra cash now?
Yes, we have a ready day fund.
How much is in the ready day fund?
About approximately 1.4 million.
What are you going to do on the HVAC that we're starting to hear that you're going to have to replace and fix here in the school?
That's not part of this project, but that's not an accurate statement. We're not going to have to replace our HVAC.
Well, what are you going to do with the $2 million COVID money that you received?
All that's going back to classroom instruction.
Completely.
A strong majority of it, yes.
What's the strong majority?
Again, this is not part of this project, and I'd be happy to show you our budget for our SIR funds, but a lot of that money is going to protect salaries and jobs in the school corporation.
All right. You know, so when I look at this $6 million project, and you're telling me you have no other projects you're going to have to borrow money on to do anything in five years, three years, eight, whatever.
I'm not going to commit to that, no, but I think our goal would be to level off tax after 2026, when it comes back down.
And, well, I have another question. If somebody else wants to step in, that's fine. You're talking, and you're talking about doing all this, which is great, you know. I'm all for education. I think it's the greatest thing in the world for all of us to do for our children and grandchildren. And when I see this, do you have a staff in place right now to handle this?
Yes, sir.
Would you have that many students, and you have them in separated areas? How are you going to be able to take care of those children safely in those areas that have rooms?
So a majority of that space will be staffed by our RTI, our support staff, and they're already in place. They're just currently working, doing RTI services in hallways or closets or wherever we can plug them into.
What's an RTI?
Response to intervention.
Have they been trained in all the computers and all the work that they have to do with them?
Yes, sir.
So how many, how, do you have to, is there a law that says you have to have so many teachers per space, per child?
No, no law. We just have to provide proper supervision.
Well, when I was looking at those.
Sir, I think the president said three to four minutes for each person. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance.
That's fine.
We're also going to come back and have another hearing, so we want to, we want to gather questions, and we're glad to take your questions, but when they're shot back at the administration, give them a chance to answer.
That's fine.
Let's gather those questions, all right?
All right.
We'd love everybody to get their questions answered. I'm not trying to dissuade you at all, and I really would like people to get their chance to ask their questions.
Cody Brunz, 9882 North 700 East, Union City. Looking through everything, and I did a walkthrough with Aaron yesterday, right? How do I want to put this? The only thing I've seen where you'd get a return on investment is taking the courtyard out. Cut down the tree, take the concrete out, and create your rooms. Everything else is in still functional condition. I guess my other question is, are we trying to spend money to spend money in an inflated air, in inflation right now? I think I asked that the other day, but I'm bringing it out again now. And yes, it's, I've hit the redundancy probably. If you do this, it's a 20-year note, correct? Loan, whatever you want to call it. I'm going to go back to Derek. In five, 10 years, when you decide to do another project, how much are you going to push back out? If Union City's capped out, you're pushing it to Wayne and Jackson Townships, and you're not pushing little amounts. So my thought is, if you do this, you do a section at a time, piecemeal it in, not all at once. Because in five years, you may decide, you want to, the computer labs are obsolete. We want to do something else over here. We're going to do it that way. Technology changes so fast. I guess that's really all I have. If anybody has a thought.
Thank you.
Mary Armatrow. My address is 8065 North 600 East, Union City, Indiana, 47390. I would like to know, I agree, the courtyard. I agree with that one, but I've seen the agroom. It's functional. It just needs a little help in there. And it needs a little bit of upgrade. Yes, new doors. That would be nice. But I want to know, on this project, if you do the courtyard only, is anybody, is this locally? Is anybody going to be coming in locally that's going to be doing this? Because we have signs all over Union City bi-local. Or is this going to be out to big companies?
It'll go to bid, and anybody locally would definitely be more open to bids, but by law, we never accept the lowest.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And Mary, obviously, that's one of the four, because it's very clear to me that we do the south local.
Yes, I agree, because, I agree. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Tammy Brousse. I live at 1641 Monroe Avenue, Union City, Indiana. The courtyard, I don't know that if we need classroom in there or not. I've taught for 41 years, and the best way to do small group, I agree, small group, is to put your teacher in the classroom with the other teacher. Collaborating is not only good for students, it's great for teachers, which turns around and helps students. I also, you know, I was here when we took West Side down, and we brought everything here, and we just redid those areas. I also know that we are now retired. We're on a fixed income. We have a business, and I am part of a farm. So I'm looking at all this cost that I'm putting out, but the money I'm getting back in isn't growing like the money I'm. I'm getting back in isn't growing like the money I'm putting out. And so that concerns me because it's not just me, it's other people. And I'm getting really concerned because as I go out and about in this town, I see elderly people everywhere. I don't see the younger ones that are bringing in a lot of money. Um, I am an RTI teacher. I don't work in the halls. I work in a classroom. I don't see anybody in the hall doing RTI in the elementary. Now, maybe back in the far corner, some of them are. I just don't see it where I'm at. Um, do we have some need for things? Yes, but I don't know that we need to take tax money to provide some of that. I've always been for education, obviously, or I would not have taught for 41 years and come back and still help kids. But I just don't feel comfortable going out and asking all these people for money that they don't really have to give up. Thank you for your time.
I'm Jerry Wasson, 7565 North 700 East, Union City, Indiana. I do not, I'm a farmer. I do not, the majority of the land that I own is in Ward Township. So the assessed value on farmland will not affect me like it will most of my counterparts back here. But I do have hog barns and a house and I have, whoever's got a calculator, I have just in Jackson Township, I have assessed value, assessed value of $654,000. What would my tax, how much of my taxes are going to go up?
I don't have that with me right now.
What's that?
I don't have that with me right now.
You don't know what the rate's going to be?
On your specific property, no, I do not have the exact amount.
So we don't know what, or how much our taxes are going to go up then?
Incremental impact, ten cents on, on your assessed value.
Per hundred or thousand or?
Per hundred dollars.
Per hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Another thing, I want to-
Pardon?
Mr. Black, how much stimulus money did Randolph Eastern get since this COVID mess has started?
Just under $3 million.
$3 million. And how has that been applied to our debt or how has it been spent?
Funds were restricted to be, they tend to be applied towards debt. SIR funds cannot be applied towards debt. Uh, they're, they're applied towards learning loss. So we've increased staff. I mean, Tammy is a product of that. Uh, she, she holds a position with Randolph Eastern because of those funds. And there's a number of other teachers that we've been able to hold on to, uh, because those dollars, a large number of those dollars went towards PPEs, personal protective equipment, uh, throughout last year, HVAC upgrades, um, that, that we've been working on, make sure proper ventilation. So number of different areas, but a majority of it over the next two and a half years will go towards learning loss.
Has it all been spent?
No, sir.
Okay. Is that part of the rainy day fund or?
No, that, those funds are standalone and we have through-
How much, how much funds do you have of that left then?
Okay, I can answer that off the top of my head, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I will say just over $2 million.
Thank you.
I'm not signed up, but I want to, I need to sign up, I guess. Want to do that?
Eric Benz, 683 South County Road 500 East.
Um, I guess I have a couple of questions. Where is our student enrollment compared to like 10 years ago? Have we gained a lot of kids?
Our student enrollment's pretty steady. Down 20 and 21. Well, we'll see a minor dip, uh, because some early graduate, graduates we, we had last year impacting that. But our enrollment stayed fairly steady, um, over the past 10 to 12 years. I couldn't look back any farther than that. It's not where it was in 1990, but it, it's remained pretty steady.
Okay. I guess this money, we can, we can survive it. But would you guys want to go on record as in, after they built this, in a couple of years, the test scores and the grade averages are going to go up because you're going, kids are going to learn better? That's the bottom line for me. Are the kids going to be smarter? Will we spend this kind of money?
I, I think we will absolutely better-
You'll see a return on it.
I think we will absolutely better serve our students. Yes, sir.
They'll be smart or they'll-
I look at you and I tell you-
It looks like kind of posh thing to me, like it's-
You, you asked me a question. I look at you and I tell you, I 100% believe our students will be better served.
All right. Because it kind of looks to me like they might be in for a shock when they get in the real world, some of them. It looks like we're kind of catering to, I don't know. That just might be, and that's all I got. Thanks.
What's your 20-year plan? If this is a 20-year note, what's the 20-year plan?
Well, Cody, I honestly don't know. That's a fair question for-
It is for all of us. We're getting 20 years of taxes. It's a fair question for, are, are you coming into, I mean, with technology changing and things, can we update facilities in the way that they need to be without building new? Are you, I mean, do you think, back to Benz, is, is enrollment going to go up, going to go down, hold the same? We hope it holds the same so we don't have to merge with anybody else. But the, if, I guess, in my position, if I was sitting there, I would hope we have at least a 10-year plan. I mean, whether we're all there or not, doesn't matter, but we at least attempted.
If I may add something here, along with the, the facility plan that, that SiteLogic has done, um, there has been some forward thought into the structuring of these bonds here. So i, if you take a look at the, the green bars, the proposed, the proposed debt, you'll see that in '26 to '27, there's a decrease in annual payments. And again, a decrease from '28 to '29, which really gives the school flexibility in the year, you know, looking in '25, '26, and then possibly again in 2027, to look at taking on additional debt to, to take care of, maybe there's HVAC, maybe there's, there's additional needs that they may have in the future without affecting the debt rate. So they, they've really allowed themselves flexibility in the future with the structuring of this debt. Were they to condense the structuring of the debt and shorten the repayment term?
Did you say you looked at $2 million of interest?
They may cap themselves out and, and not be able to, to issue any debt without impacting the tax rate, again, for another 13 or 14 years. So there ha, there has been some thought on, um, the school board, Mr. Black, um, to those issues.
Did I catch that right? That it's $2.7 million in interest on the 600, or the 6 million?
6 million.
Or the current debt plus 6 million?
This is, this is for the proposed debt only. So 2,779,000.
Yes, thank you. The green bar is the debt that the 6 million will, will go out to, correct?
Correct.
So it's still, 21, 241. We have 20 years in debt. Regardless of restructuring or taking on new debt, there's still 20 years there. So that's why I'm asking, do, and I don't ask anybody to predict the future because I don't think nobody can. The question really is, if you take this on and you're doing it for 20 years, what's your 20-year projection? What's your 20-year idea? Not necessarily a solid plan that can't change, but what is it?
So, so Cody, I think that maybe the answer to your question, I'll try my best, is just, is to have the ability every three or four years to be able to respond to needs without impacting the tax.
Do, do you think in three to four years, if you do it all 6 million, you won't do, want to do something after that?
But that, so that's when the debt falls off again, we'll have the ability to-
But you're still-
I think you're-
You're still climbing.
Right, but I think-
You're women down.
Yeah, I think you're looking at it for-
You think, well, tack another chunk up on.
I think you're looking at it from a homeowner's perspective or diff-
I'm looking at it from a farmer's perspective that's going to have to write out a note for 20 years. Nobody looks at, but $6 million, that's 600 acres at $10,000 an acre. Most people work their whole lives to build 600 acres of. So that's what you're asking for.
I'm not asking it from an individual.
I'm just saying, this scenario is what that's asking for.
But I think what, and we kind of had this conversation yesterday, is debt is a guarantee. Debt will happen in a school corporation. It, it's how it operates. So therefore, you're not, I think you see it as, we're not paying off, when are we going to pay off this new car, right? That situation will probably never come.
Debt's a natural thing, as long as you can control it.
Correct. And that's what we, that's the design.
600,000 dollar payments, at some point, are you going to be able to control it? That you're not going to stick another thing on top?
So that's, that's the design is to control it. That's, that's the thought that went into as far as long-term planning goes.
So you have a plan, you have a plan for the loan and the, and the interest and the, basically the mortgage?
Correct.
Okay. I don't think I quite got what I was after, but we're close as I'm going to get, I figure.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to not disclose something. I just-
Well, I, I-
If you're-
Tammy's been here 40 years. I bet she can give me an average of what's, what's happened in 40 years. What do you think's going to happen in the next 10 years, Tammy?
Well, how long ago did we ask you this?
2003, 2006. So that's perfect example. It's a 20-year note, right?
Right.
But, but you're not going to get to the point where, if you're looking at this saying, when are we going to be debt-free? That day's not going to come.
But what, if you got down to $200,000 payment, could you do more with the money that comes in instead of spending $800,000 on a, on debt payment?
No, because it's, taxes are levied by, so you have a debt, debt levy. I mean, the way the world is designed is to have, to carry debt. So that's part of what we levy. So-
So you'll never let one expire is what you're saying?
No, that, that's the debt falling off, but we will maintain that line.
Okay. Thank you.
Drew Cleveland, uh, resident of Farmland. And the reason I'm speaking is because some of these gentlemen are not. So I'm going to say what they're thinking, or at least what I think they're thinking. Uh, so my full-time job is regional manager for Indiana Farm Bureau. I cover six counties and Randolph County is one of them. And obviously, a big concern of Farm Bureau is representing our members who are farmers. And so when I heard about this project, I was concerned. Uh, I've been involved in several of these over the years of my career and it seems like they're all very similar. Um, so a couple of concerns, uh, from what I can tell, I did some research. It was talked about enrollment. It looks like your enrollment's going down. 879 in 2021, 849 this year, projected to go down again next year. And that's a projection. But from my experience in covering these rural areas, and you guys are up against it, you have declining enrollment, but you still need to upkeep your buildings, need to upkeep the level of your education. And as farmers, we're all for that. However, it doesn't make sense to do a building project when you have declining enrollment. I understand you have to keep up the building, but there's probably different things that you can do without having a bond. The other part, the second point of concern, uh, did some research. It looks like you've received over $3 million in stimulus money. It sounded like earlier you said you spent some of that on salaries, which I don't know if anybody can argue with that. Teachers don't make enough as it is. However, that's an operating expense and if you're spending it one time, it's gone. But could you not have spent some of that on this building project? And looking at the building project as it is proposed, you know, I don't live here, I didn't go to school here, but it seems like some of those things are maybe not top priority and maybe not necessary if you're looking at minimizing your expenses. Last point, um, I think it was brought up earlier, but you know, Union City as a whole is already up against a tax cap. So I don't know that you're going to be getting money from there, so you're going to be getting money from farmers. And there's one other aspect of this that your research didn't bring out. But if you have a livestock building, it would have been nice to have seen a projection on that because they're, they're paying a, a large sum in taxes and the assessed value's pretty high on those buildings. A lot higher than $200,000 home. So that's the concerns as far as I can tell. And, uh, that's it for me. Thanks.
Claudia Thornburg, 623 South 400 East Winchester. Although I live on the right side of the road, so I'm in Wayne Township. Six of my grandkids come to Union City to school and three of them are involved in the agriculture program. So you said that you were doing a large investment in the agriculture program and I'd like to know what that is.
So the, the shop renovation to partner our ag and engineering courses, which are pretty synonymous in a lot of the things they do, a large part of the shop renovations will be in mind for our ag students to have a, a proper workspace in order to do the work that they do, whether it be for competitions for FFA and those type of things. Another investment that we've recently made is partnering with Tree Hill Farms to establish some greenhouses on the old property by the old West Side to have an extension for another, another place for our agriculture students to learn horticulture, greenhouse and those type of things.
Well, I, I have one, uh, well, actually, two of my three grandkids that are involved in the ag program are interested in vet science. And so I'm tired of my grandkids coming home with their hair on fire saying, "I can't follow my pathway in life because things are changing." And so I, it's hard to calm down kids and I'm sure you understand that. But they don't like change any better than we do. I understand that too. But I just want them to be able to enjoy what they have. And of the FFA members that we have now, I know most of them come up through the middle school program. So I don't want to see that cut either.
Sorry, a very good point. I'm not sure about the pathway question. I could have Mr. Adams, Mr. Loomis look into their specific situation, but our, our plan is to continue to have a junior high exploratory program. I know there's some current concerns with the teachers that may or may not be retiring and what we're going to do to replace him. I don't have that answer right now. It's really dictated by the students' requests on what we do with that position. But there, there are no plans to reduce our ag offerings. Um, they may look a little different, but if your grandchildren are in the animal science pathway, that, that's something that, um, one of our teachers, that's their strong suit. So I, I, I-
I don't-
I understand your concerns. I really do because we fight this pathway things on a daily basis and, and there's some poos we do have to jump through for, as far as graduation requirements go. But we're committed to our agriculture program.
I hope so, because we are an agriculture community.
I agree.
And the other point I would like to make to Mr. Baker, Tilly or whoever made- And the other point I would like to make to Mr. Baker Tilly, or whoever made these things, most taxpayers are not fresh out of school, and they don't understand acronyms. I don't know what a CTE is. I do know what an STEM is, because we have a STEM scholarship in a group that I belong to. But if I hadn't known that, acronyms need to be explained.
Mr. Baker Tilly, that's more my fault than it is yours, so I do apologize for that. Educators have a terrible issue with speaking in acronyms. Thank you.
Okay, on the ag program, we all know Mr. Smith's retiring. Cindy Nunes will be here, love her. But are you planning on bringing somebody else? Because that's a lot of classes, and Cindy cannot cover all of them. I think this is why they're afraid that it's going to be cut somewhere. So are you re-planning on bringing somebody in that's qualified to teach that class?
This is about the project. The comments need to be left.
While you're talking about the ag program, you're wanting to do all this to this building.
Mary, and just quickly, it's a bit of redundancy, but right, we have no plans to cut or damage our ag program. I don't know what it's going to look like if said teacher retires, but we don't have any intention of cutting the offerings that we're offering to our students.
I just want to see the traits to stay. Ryan, you know what Ryan has done. The boy's making 25 bucks an hour welding, and that's amazing. I never thought he could do this, and that's because of Rob Smith, or Ron Smith. So I'm ecstatic. I would like to see the traits stay, instead of being fancy classrooms, because there's a lot of students in that ag room, lots. There's sometimes what, 30 students, more, doing this in a classroom? And I see them spaced up, and I can't see, those are going to be small classrooms.
There's no law since square footage.
So I'm just.
They're exact same size.
I'm still concerned. I'll be watching this, but I just think it's too much right now. With everything going up, everything has went up on us. And a lot of these elderly are on a budget. We're on a budget now. So I just think it's too much at this time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, I think on the agricultural community here, we feel like we're going to unfairly start to burn this, pay this amount back. For no more of us than there is, and no more kids than we have in school, that we're going to be stuck with a lot of the budget. Mike?
Thank you. I have another question. I'd walk up, and my back's hurting so bad, I can't really do it, but if there, I saw J.B. Preston walk in here. Is there any possibility of a school consolidation down the road? And who's going to assume that debt?
Yeah, there's no discussion of school consolidation concerning Randolph Eastern at this point.
Ed Thornburg, 623 South 400 East, also on the right side of the road. My question will go to you first, because you have the closest clue of understanding it. And Union City is crashing into the tax cap. There's no doubt about that, that's, you know, it's over $6. And so we're, tax cap, the tax cap loss, you know, everybody's real proud to say, well, we're just going to have to absorb that. That is probably going to be a third of the payment on this thing. And so how is that going to be made up? We deal, I deal, in county government, we deal with this tax cap loss on a regular basis, a good bit of it from Union City. It's wrecking our budget. So where's this tax cap loss, who's going to eat this thing?
So you're right, Union City's at 6.5 cents this year. Jackson's at 1.9, and Wayne Township is at 2.01.
2.1, yeah.
And it is, beating up against the tax cap is more of a problem for the school corporation than the taxpayers, right? The taxpayers.
Well, it's a problem for the school corporation and for the taxpayers, because somebody's got to make this up. You can't, you know, like I say, I wouldn't, I don't begrudge a single teacher a salary anywhere. That money has to come from somewhere. And what pot are we going to rob to make the payments on this building project?
So you're not necessarily robbing the pot.
I understand, I understand the cap loss on a county level. I wonder what it is here.
He's going to have to work within his budget that he has in order to make sure that he can live within the amount of money that is coming to him. So if his levy is at a certain amount, and he doesn't get that full levy, the school corporation and Mr. Black are going to have to find a way to function within that amount. And they know that taking on this debt, that that's part of taking on this debt.
Did you guys go far enough in your projections to give him an estimated cost of what that tax loss will be?
We did, and we looked at it on a parcel-by-parcel basement, basis, within the school corporation district.
What kind of number did that total to?
I have those, I don't have those with me, and Mr. Black would be the one that I would direct you to if you want that information.
Okay, that, to me, is a major part of this, because, you know, so we suck it up and decide to build this thing, that's wonderful, then how, actually, then how do we make the payments? I know, actually, I know what this tax cap thing is doing to us on a county level, and decimation is a really nice word. Thank you.
I just want to add that the debt service fund will not, there will not be money coming out of the debt service fund for Circuit Breaker unless it's chosen by the, unless they apply for the waiver, receive it, and use the waiver.
Could you repeat that?
So the tax impact on the Circuit Breaker, money won't come out of the debt service fund for that, except for the Circuit Breaker above 65 years of age. So there's caveat there. Unless he, the school corporation applies for a waiver, and they have to be eligible for that waiver, they have to apply, they have to receive it, and then they have to choose to use that waiver. So the loss of funds from Circuit Breaker will be from his other funds, not the debt
The school corporation has always figured in that tax loss, the Circuit Breaker loss into our overall budget, and not apply for the waiver to apply that to debt service, if that helps. Katie, go ahead.
Thank you Superintendent Black, members of the board. I'm going to be very brief. I really do not have any testimony on this project. I do just want to clarify one thing, since my name was brought up in a question here, but the General Assembly has no intent of mandating any consolidation at this time. I've not, I mean, there may be some members that do, but that is not something that is current discussion that I would be overtly worried about. I'd say the most likely scenario is if there was ever any local decision to collaborate between the existing school corporations, or if it was forced by referenda, there's an option to do that as well in Indiana statute, but those are really the only two ways. So I, there is no fear of that happening from the state. I am honestly just here to learn about the project, hear what the constituents have to say. I do have my own personal views on this, but due to being a separate elected official, I respect the board and their official capacity, and it's not my job to, I do not want to sway any influence in that say whatsoever, but I'd be happy to have some private conversations on my views later on. Thank you.
Lynn Rickert, live at 3142 South State Road 227, Union City. My wife and I have lived there for 48 years, and I'm an old and tired farmer, and I don't know why we would want to consider a project in this time and age. My expenses have gone up tremendously, fixed expenses, in just the last eight to nine months. I live on Social Security, and I'm very conservative. I wouldn't even think about spending a portion of this money under the circumstances. Our economy is such that it bothers me, hopefully it bothers other people, but we don't know what we're looking at in the next year or two. And this project, you say it's 6 million. Is the expenses for building already established? Are those firm? The price of everything's gone up, up, and up. In another year, is it going to be up, and up, and up? So is this a fixed already? But if it isn't, then again, I would consider backing up and maybe doing it, somebody I think said, in piecemeal. But what are we looking at in the next three or four years? None of us know, but I do know that my expenses have gone up. Thank you.
My name's Suzie Norton, and I live on 4278 North State Line Road. And I just would like to say, it's always easy to spend someone else's money.
I'm Isaac Thornburg, 3885 South 400 East Winchester. My two children are freshmen here. The, I'm going to change gears on you. The renovation of the ag sector and adding the engineering portion of those classes, how much time is that going to take out of what's already ag time now? If you're combining the ag and the engineering focus?
So they wouldn't take, so they're going to be separate entities, so we have multiple teachers for both. The hope would be that they could collaborate on projects to work together in that space.
But they're in the same space, you can't have the same classes going on at the same time.
Yeah, they're separate space. So the two classrooms, so you have the computer science room, and then there are two classroom spaces, they would be separate spaces.
Is there a big want for engineering curriculum?
Yes, I think we have a strong, the student next to me on my left, there's a strong interest in engineering, and I think for us, and working with Project Lead the Way, the engineering piece and the technology piece, and how it's impacting agriculture right now, is very important, as a lot of you know well better than I do, that agriculture's changed. So we're, the shift is to better meet the needs of the future farmer, the future ag student, or the future welder, those type of things.
Well, here's where I'm going to go with this. When I graduated in 1998, I had a dream, I was going to be an ag engineer. That lasted for three semesters at Purdue, when they asked me to find something else to do, because I was not prepared for the math. And we got survey after survey, how is our math? I filled out that it was awful, they needed to fix something. From all the feedback I'm getting now from people who have had the math classes here, it's not any better. So if we don't have the math to support the engineering side of it, is it worth spending the money to focus on other things?
So we're looking at two, the engineering world, so there's the Purdue engineering world, and then there's the certificate world of Ivy Tech, so precision machining, those type of things. They're crossover, but what I'm saying, we're looking at more the engineering world, and this young lady's going way above and beyond. She's a Purdue engineer, future graduate, there's no doubt in my mind. But she, we're looking at students that can do some engineering to go out to ECO and help them engineer a product on their line based on the certificate that they would earn through us and then through Ivy Tech. And not necessarily your civil engineer that goes to Purdue, does that help at all?
A little bit.
I'm sure.
I was going to be an ag engineer, but that's all right.
Okay, I apologize.
We dabble in everything, but if I completed it.
Thank you to all who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and interest in the project and the future of our community. Please note this is just the first step in the legal process. No court action is legally required at this hearing, rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comments. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies, conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this cafeteria, probably, whatever we need room for. It will be on September 16, 2021, FICF. Thank you for coming, we'll be in the dirt.